Oh, I mean, I could, I could look her up.
Sure.
If she was private, I could definitely see it. So. Maybe if I have her name, if you have her name. I don't know who it is, but I can, I can look her up. Yeah.
Good thing.
Do you guys want to speak at all?
Um, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, we have to sign out.
Oh, no, probably not. I don't know yet. I was gonna take.
Thanks.
And you put me with your other thing right there.
Yes.
We need a asking clerk.
Darcy, are you asking with clerk? Zoe is gonna say this and I am the one. Okay. Is that okay? Do you need to do something?
No, Mark was just asking.
Yes. Zoe is gonna, and I am.
All right, all right. Erica, you, when you're ready. You ready? All right. I'm going to call the meeting to order. If you could join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And as the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'd just like to welcome everyone that's here. It's a regular school board meeting where we conduct our business. We have a number of things on the agenda. The first is to accept the revised agenda. And I think Lori was.
Yeah, if I could, I would just like to propose that we add an agenda item under new business. I was wondering if we could discuss one more time. The timing of our fall levy for last time we voted on this fall going on for the levy. And my reasons are threefold. Um, first, we've heard quite a bit from our community about the timing of this thing. The second, we've struggled as a board with the timing of this levy. And third, um, we've asked Mr. Jennison to consult with the professionals we had hired after the last meeting. And in doing so, they've both told him that now they feel like our timeline is too tight to make all of this happen. To get a survey out, to get it back, to look at the results, to decide if we're going out, to meet the August deadline about proposing the levy. And then to do an adequate job in educating the public. And, um, as far as I'm concerned as well, we haven't really, as a board, sat down and said, what are our goals? What are our needs to come to the amount? And I just feel like we would just be pushing it so we can discuss it further. But I would like to just add to the agenda, if people agree, to just talk about the timing of it, not, not doing it. The timing of it one more time.
So that would be added under a new business. We'll just put it at the end.
We need a motion and a second.
I so move.
A second. All in favor, signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, we don't have anyone signed up for open forum, so we're going to move forward with exceptional workforce awards. And I actually have two of them here. All right. I think what I'll do is I'm going to read them and then we'll have both of them come up and have a little picture. Darcy, you're in charge of the photo, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. First exception, yes.
You made a motion to make the change, Eric, and pass it to the levy discussion, but you didn't accept the.
Thank you, you're right.
Good point.
I'll make a motion to accept the revised agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. All right, I'm sorry. Not the first time I've been confused in my life. Anyways, exceptional employee award, this is for Lisa Frost. And she was nominated by Carly Pease and Megan Abel. And each of them has written a little summary of, uh, basically why she was nominated. The first is stated, and I believe this is Carly, it may not be, I don't know. Lisa Frost has been a member of the district for many years. I looked to Lisa as a mentor when I started as a para and still calling Lisa for advice to this day. Lisa has a heart of gold and shows it when she works with our kids at Lakeside. Lisa sets the example for what it means to be a para and put kids first. Lisa is now working Wildcat Academy, is no longer, and is no doubt making a difference there. Lisa has proven to go above and beyond for our students consistently since I started working with her last year. This is possibly from Megan Abel. She is an excellent para as she's able to take the direction and run with it, as well as suggest ideas if she's noticed that something works with a student. She's also a natural problem solver, but also feels comfortable asking questions and seeking feedback to better herself. Currently, she is working with our Wildcat Academy students and has strived to create relationships with the students she works with online with success. She is always professional while being personable at the same time. I believe Lisa Frost would be a great choice for this exceptional workforce recognition. Thank you. We want to thank Lisa for all that she has done for Shasago Lakes School District. Again, we repeat, we certainly appreciate her. Next up is Mr. Pat Collins. And Pat is one of the few people that I actually worked with when I was a teacher here many years ago.
Not sure what that's saying.
We're not gonna say anything. It's okay.
I'm teasing you.
It's okay. Anyways, Pat was nominated for this exceptional employee award by Jim Galach and Darcy Peckman Kruger. I don't know, I'm, some of this is Jim. The summary of his state of, of his comments is, Pat has worked tirelessly on working with students and on his own time. Improving the Shasago Lakes Middle School outdoor classroom. The latest additions have been display panels that hold special messages from staff and students alike regarding mental health, preserving the environment, and various other positive quotes from notorious people. Also, Pat has created an additional garden and small fence panel with additional various quotes, again, rewritten as colorful works of art to share with the walkers and bikers along the public path west of the middle school. This project was developed by Mr. Collins and brings light to the issues of climate change, positive living, and mental health. Projects like this allow students to live, reflect, and create in a way that not only allows them to process real world issues for their own benefit and growth, but to share publicly with the broader Shasago Lakes community. Pat is not one to toot his own horn, especially at this point in his career. However, I am sure he would be most grateful of this recognition for his efforts linking Shasago Lake students and the greater Shasago Lakes community. The other comment is, Pat worked many hours during COVID, listening to staff concerns and doing research to find ways for the district to help keep our workplace safe for everyone. His knowledge and work with staff allowed us to put precautions in place so staff felt comfortable coming back to school this year. Pat has done and continues to do amazing things for Shasago Lake School District with the many hats that he wears. This contribution just added to it. We are very fortunate to have Pat here at Shasago Lakes. Our district is a better district because of teachers and employees like him. And we want to thank you, Pat, for what you've done for the school district. And we appreciate you. So let's give him a hand. Lisa. Pat. Actually, there's this. Dad has a nickname for you. Lynch, Lynch. I don't know where he's.
Oh, my.
Came from, so I'm just pronouncing your name when you're assistant hockey coach.
Yeah. What do you, what do we do here, hockey or? All right, let's, let me move the chair, excuse me.
Yep.
Okay. Then we have something from ECMAC that Dean was going to deal with, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, we sent this out district-wide, but I wanted to make mention of it as well. Here in this group, we did have educator of excellence awards that were awarded through ECMAC, which is our technology cooperative that we're a part of. There are four criteria that guide these nominations: innovation, effective leadership, building community, and impact on learning. Our district-wide technology staff met this spring using building feedback to nominate staff based upon the criteria listed above. With the ever-changing demand of our staff and students this past year, the use of technology to deliver instruction was crucial. Our nominations this year exemplify these guiding principles in their work with their students and with their colleagues. So our winners, um, that we just wanted to mention publicly, um, from, uh, Shasago Lakes here, uh, were Rebecca Zimmerman, um, who is a middle school math and Wildcat Academy teacher this year. Becca Johnson, who was a Taylor's Falls grade five teacher and a Wildcat Academy teacher. Art Underhill, uh, primary school grade one and a Wildcat Academy teacher. Liz Valine, high school technology support. Mike Clune, uh, uh, district office network administrator. Emily Anderson, Taylor's Falls grade five. Amber Anderson, uh, middle school PE teacher. And Britta Zarebock, high school art teacher. So I just wanted to mention all of them, so people who are listening and tuning in, um, would know that those were our educator of excellence awards, uh, this year. So congratulations to them.
All right. There's a couple of donations. Uh, we've been continuing to receive a number of them, but the ones that we're going to recognize tonight because they're on the agenda are two $1,000 donations to help, uh, for playground equipment. I believe it's both at the primary school. One is from the Center City Fire Department, and actually, I think it's Shasago City, hang on a second.
We got Shasago City, yeah.
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 It's Shasago City Fire Department. And then the other was from Malax Corporate Ventures, which is owned and operated by the Malax Band of Ojibwa. And, um, I think that Brenda Shell did a lot through someone that she knew that worked there to secure that grant as well. So we just wanted to mention those companies and institutions that have contributed these. These, uh, two grants for $1,000. Up next is the Director of Business Service update. I'll turn it over to Robin Bosby-Torgerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, the first thing I have is the financial picture for the month of May 2021. Um, and this is with, um, with the revised budget in it. So we're looking at the general fund, obviously much closer to budget, showing at 92% of revenue and 79% of expenditures. And, um, the good thing was we're looking at food service and community service, um, coming much closer to budget because of that revised budget. So we've got some good signs there. Um, 82% revenue and 79, or 71% of expenditures. So revenue's higher, expenditure's lower, that's what we want to see. And in community service, 104% of revenue, so that's a really good sign there. So obviously, we budgeted much more conservatively there. And then construction funds, which we're still obviously spending money on the primary project and debt service fund, there's no change. Um, if anybody has any questions on this, I will bring one next month, a June one, it won't be audited, it'll be still an un-audited one, but I'll, it'll have June 30th numbers on it.
Robin, maybe just one thing to mention to the, you know, to those listening, but you know, just kind of that piece of that information. So the books close out on June 30th.
Correct.
And what happens between June 30th and the audit? And the audit is typically November to December.
Yeah, we have our auditors coming in October, mid-October. Um, since we're on a modified accrual basis, we do a lot of, um, receivables and payables. In the current year, we only received 90% of our revenue from the state and then 10% in the, in the pri, in the next fiscal year. So we work on setting up those receivables of all the revenue and then the payables as well. So we don't get our, um, final student numbers until, well, the final numbers don't really come until probably January, but we take a, an educated guess in October and November to get those into our audit, so. So there's lots, lots of work to be had in the summer. Okay, the next thing, um, we have a federal funding presentation as well. So, um, oh, thank you, Eric. Eric's got to help me drive a little bit. Oh, thank you. Okay, so along with our financial picture and our budget, which I will present later in this meeting, uh, federal COVID funding has been in the forefront of everything that we've been doing lately. Uh, Dean, uh, Mr. Jennison and I met with the entire administrative team and we wanted to share the outcome of that meeting. These recommendations have been shared with our finance committee of the board last week as well. Our team was very thoughtful as we went through the process and tied each of these expenditures to a district goal or a strategic plan. So you can see our goals, our first goal with personal safety, our second goal with every student having an advocate, and our third goal with, um, increasing students' critical thinking skills. They're also tied to our strategic plan of communications, life skills, exceptional workforce, and commu, or comprehensive programs. I know this is kind of hard to see, but I like to include, again, this federal COVID finding, funding flow chart that I've shared previously. I think every time I see it, it's updated a little bit and changes every time I see it, but this is the latest one I've seen. I just want to kind of show you which, well, I want to show you which boxes we have actually gotten, um, as a district. If you look at the, the three arrows that go down, on the very left, that, that's the CARES funding. So that's a Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, and we receive each one of those boxes. The S R 90%, S R 1 90%, S R 1 9 and 1/2%, the GEAR 1, and then the C R F. So we receive each one of those. Um, the middle arrow coming down was the CRISA, or the, I'm trying to read this now too, Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act. We were, we received the S R 2 90%, which is the very far box. And then down below that was the Expanding Summer Programs, which is Finance 163 or 162, they've been changing that one on me a little bit. And then over to the far right, the American Rescue Plan or ARP, we're receiving on the, the very far left one there, the Governor's Summer Support or FIN 150, and then the S R 3 90%, the 20% learning, and then learning loss, and then the 80% flexible. So those are the boxes that we're receiving so far on, out of the COVID federal funding. So I want to start with summer school funding, since this, that's kind of what's right in front of us right now. Um, we sent an estimate of enrollment to the Minnesota Department of Education in April, and this is the initial amount that was released to us, was the 101 376. This is the initial re, release. Um, the final funding that we receive will be based off the actual enrollment that we have at the end of summer school. And right now, I believe the number's going to be a little lower than that with the numbers that we're, um, that we're seeing coming into summer school. That amount, along with the Governor's Discretionary Fund of the 86,000, and that money is to be used more for mental health services and support, will cover most of the cost of the summer school this year, but not quite all of it. And you'll see later, um, I'll talk about that a little bit later as well. So then we talk about S R 1. Before we learned about the summer school funding, the plan was that we were going to set aside our S R 1 and GEAR 1 funds to pay for summer school. Now that we have that funding, we've switched to help cover more of those, I'm going to put in quotes, but for COVID expenses that we continue to have this year. And S R 1 funds just, you know, have to be spent before any S R 2 or S R 3 funds can be spent at all. So we have our extra bus cleaning, and that was all statute, or, you know, those were, we had to do extra bus cleaning this year. And I'm going to actually have Mr. Jennison help me with some of the goals on these, what they were meant for. But we had $15,000 of extra expenses in bus cleaning. And that was goal one, and that was safety. Um, our additional food expenses were, were also safety, and then like, goal two was.
Advocacy for, yeah, advocacy for our students, yep.
And that was an additional $30,000, and that was, um, some additional, uh, paper products and, um, our transportation of food, and so there was an additional 30, over $30,000 we had to spend but for COVID. And then we had the tier one childcare expenditures that we spent, and that was $156,000 that we spent on tier one childcare workers, um, that they did not have to pay for childcare this year. And that was advocacy and exceptional workforce, I remember E W. And then we paid, uh, $7,433 on Wildcat Academy overloads, which was additional funding, funds that we paid to our staff for additional students that they had and additional, additional, um, things that they had to do for Wildcat Academy.
Yeah, and we tied that to not only goals one through three, but also to our comprehensive programs, you know, something we needed, you know, needed to do to support all students, and so created another, you know, piece to our programming.
And again, these funds have to be spent by September of 2022, but they have to be spent before we can spend any of the S R 2 or S R 3 funds. And of course, by using the funds that way, that'll help out our general, our food service and our community service funds in the bottom line at FY21. And these were all expenses that we wouldn't have had but for COVID. So moving into S R 2, we had $795,656 that's been allocated to us. And 375,000 of these funds, we are setting, um, that we set aside in our, in our budget reduction process. And so we had, I don't remember what CP is, you know.
Comprehensive programs, yep.
I should probably know these better. And then we're sitting aside an additional 55,000 to make sure that our summer school is covered because we weren't sure if those were, um, the funding that we get, because we won't know until the end of the summer if we actually have enough funding to cover that. And then we're also setting aside an additional 173,000, little more, little more than that, to cover a summer school program for next summer, summer school of 2022. And then 192,000 for class size reduction. And you will notice later in our agenda that we're asking the board to approve additional teachers to support class size reduction in our elementary schools. We do have an increase in enrollment, but not enough to cover those FTEs that are needed or teachers that are needed. Um, so we're asking to use S R 2 funds to cover that additional cost. And these funds need to be spent by September of 2023.
Kind of an update on that, and just a reminder, when we went through the budget reduction process, we talked about there potentially could be enrollment brought back that would create, you know, some, some issues with grade three at Taylor's Falls, it was grade four at Lakeside, and then, um, either grade K or one at primary school, depending upon where we could put that section, where that section was needed. So, um, those were the conversations we had back in, you know, the budget reduction process, final reductions in April 5th. But then from that point, we talked about if we do continue to get enrollment, that would create a potential, um, you know, larger class size, we would look to add back positions, and that's what we're proposing tonight later on.
Okay, and last but not least, our S R 3 funds of a little over 1.7 million dollars, which are part of the American Rescue Plans. We're starting off with the budget relief. We know that we'll have to cover at least that 375,000 that we set aside for FY22, and then adding in to help the FY23 budget, setting aside a total of $900,000. Um, we're setting aside 325,000 for the elementary and litter, literacy tra, reading literacy training, which will cover actually three years. Mental health support for our students and our staff. The discussion there was an addition of social workers or other mental health professionals to help over the next year, and that's at $350,000. And then finally rounding out at 211,931 for Chromebooks, Promethean boards, and projector replacements and technology. And that is what, why that number changes when I do that. That is what the admin team has put together for our COVID funding.
Now, one, one thing I wanted to have just for the board and Sarah Schmidt is here, I don't know if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the microphone and just chatting a little bit about, um, the training we're proposing, and maybe if you could put up that slide related to S R 3. Um, just wanted to inform everyone what we're talking about with the elementary reading and literacy training. And also, you know, for those that are listening too, obviously, to hear what that entails. So if you wouldn't mind sharing a little bit about that, Sarah.
Sure, um, the elementary reading and literacy training is a program called LETRS. It's an acronym, L E T R S, which means Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And it's, you may have seen it in some proposed legislation down at the Capitol, too. It's kind of the, the big movement towards professional development around how kids learn to read. So it's not a curriculum, but it's literally teaching us how kids learn to read with the latest brain research. And so we've already had some teachers go through the training. There are eight units to go through and have training on. We have about 30 teachers who have gone through the first four units, um, including myself and some of our administrators. And then we would be looking at getting the next, the rest of the teachers, um, who are willing and want to do the training. It's about 50 of them next year would be trained on the first four units. And then in the subsequent year, we would do all teachers, units five through eight. So it covers everything that's included in how kids learn how to read. So from phonemic awareness, phonics, comprehension, vocabulary, spelling, it's, it's the whole kit and caboodle around how kids learn how to read. So we were thinking that is extremely important, especially during, um, with the COVID crisis. It's making sure we know how best to meet those kids' needs and get them at reading grade level.
So the funds are essentially for the training and to pay people to go and the cost of the training, etc.
Yes, so over three years, it would pay for all the training materials. So it's like manuals, it's online modules, it's also the training that you have to do in person. So included in that, teachers have to do some training on their own, they read manuals, they watch modules, and then they come in person, and then myself, along with, um, some of our teachers who are becoming facilitators, we then train them in person. So it covers everything, it's like 64 hours of training per year. And then it also, that amount would include resources we would need for them to implement some of their learning.
The one thing that Sarah mentioned was that in, in legislation, there has been proposals statewide to fund LETRS training. So I think, you know, from the state level, people definitely recognize the value of this program. And if they're willing to consider funding it at the state level, that's a pretty big deal. If they were to fund it at the state level, then we could potentially adjust that amount or pay for that amount. We're not sure if something comes through, but if it does, that would give us the ability to do something different with that money. So we'll be paying close attention to that, but right now, the administrative recommendation is to set aside that amount to ensure that that can happen within our district.
Are there other questions or anything else that someone was going to add to this report?
I just had a question about budget relief, is that to, um, help for shortfalls in 21, 22, 22, 23, is that?
22, 23. Yep.
So essentially, that $900,000 is not available for us for this coming school year, 21, 22. Uh, you know, we have some S R funds set aside S R 2, but that's essentially to help us for the budget reductions of 375.
Correct.
Yeah, but there's nothing available that we could use in this coming school year.
We weren't, I think we have talked about that, we weren't planning for anything to be used beyond that 375. That was a part of our budget reduction strategy and, and one of those line items. The reason why you see more in the S R, S R 3 would be is you're going to have that $375,000 worth of expenses carrying forward the next year, plus some percentage increase based upon kind of inflation. And then on top of that, our recommendation would be to roughly another, you know, 400 and, or 515,000, essentially, because if you do a little bit of increase on the 375, you bring that to 385. bring that to 385. Now you're, and we've set aside 900. We're basically saying we've got, we've got more money that we want to basically leave available for fiscal year 23, should we run into any budget challenges there to help. Again, we've got it listed as goal number two, which would be advocacy for our students, but also comprehensive programming, you know, to be able to hang on to our programs and the resources that go with it. So.
That be the thought of anything that you don't spend like summer school addition or mental health support if you don't get enough. I don't know what your plans are for the mental health support, but you know, thought even, excuse me, to have a goal to 22, 23.
It certainly could be. Yeah, it certainly could if we, if we, we had money remaining. Our thought with the mental health piece is initially is to hire social workers that could work both with students and staff. Our administration, based upon input from, from everyone in their buildings, basically we need direct service for students that have struggled from the pandemic and are going to be reenigrating back into kind of that regular school routine. But also we want those, those folks to be able to work with our staff as well, you know, opportunities to create employee. We have wellness programs, but I think it's really working with employees as well where needs are. So if there are monies remaining, you know, Jeff, I think the thought would be, yeah, they're still available for other things. I think it's, it's knowing what those are and being able to quantify that and bring that back to you as a board and say, this is what we think we could use these monies on if they're available. Summer school would certainly be a, a real variable because that's based upon attendance. We won't know that number till the end of the summer. And we set aside an S R two, an additional $55,000 to cover summer school in case that's not going to be enough. And a big variable for us is transportation right now on that issue costly.
And then I would just a thought on the mental health part, I'm assuming a lot of people are looking for people to fill in.
Yeah.
And if we don't find people to fill, that's quite a chunk of money for some of our class sizes that again are larger or, and I know you just kind of say, we don't want to spend anything that's going to require, but something in the future, but those social workers or anybody that you hire is also going to be needed. I mean, they're going to be let go at the end of this period of time. Was there any discussion or thought about using some of that 325 or the 350? I don't know which one.
Mental health sports.
So to maybe reduce class sizes, that's so you have just a lower teacher to student ratio for those types of things. And I would just say, if we can't find social workers, because they will only be used for that year, I doubt we're going to spend money back here for the future. Sometimes some of those things can be done in a classroom with fewer students and that, that would be the only suggestion I would throw out there.
Yep.
So that mental health support, that's kind of a, I guess I'm wondering, you, you mentioned social workers, but who's pushing that board? How are we making those decisions? When will that start to take place for this coming school year or?
Yeah, we would be looking to do that for this coming school year. So we'd be looking to get, you know, advertisements out for, for staff as soon as possible. So we wanted to have this discussion with you tonight, but that would need to take place very soon. And keeping in mind, all these things are one-time funds, you know? So unless we can carry them forward, like you can see, we're looking from S R two to add an additional year of summer school, you know, that would be our proposal. And so we would intend to offer summer school again next summer. Now, we have a lot of mileage here before next summer, but there'll be other conversations. And, you know, to your point, Jeff, that's, that's just it. If we aren't able to get four social workers, let's say we can only get three, then we have some money remaining to do some things with. Those are things we're going to have to continue to see. And I think some of those needs become identified as the year progresses as well. And so we'll have to see where that all lands, but that's what our intention is for now. And again, looking at each one have the spend by dates, you know, when they're available. So you can, you can carry things forward for one to two to three years, depending upon which fund you're accessing.
Other questions? Again, this is essentially just a communications piece, so there's no action that's needed regarding it. Let's move on to the enrollment figures. Dean, is there anything that you could speak to regarding that?
Really nothing to point out. Actually, you know, what's on the onboard book there for you to view gives you some numbers there and where we, where we currently are. It was 3306. I think it was our last one. And keeping in mind, we, we had budgeted for this fiscal year, 3389, you know, way back when. So we've been operating under that level, which, you know, certainly has been a part of our conversation. You'll see in the budget, budget presentation coming up that we're going to be budgeting for 3309 next year. So those are just numbers to keep in mind as we look at the, those are key numbers for us as we look at enrollment. So nothing really to point out, but we're at that point in the summer too, where you have records requests coming in for students and maybe are transferring to somewhere else. You also have the enrollments coming in as well. So I've certainly signed many enrollment papers coming in, but we've also, I don't know what happens at the building level, the principals certainly do as to how many, how many records they're sending out to people as well. So it's a lot of shifting right now. Actually, today's enrollment was 3301. So on a daily basis, we're updating that, but we will, will continue to bring that back to the board. We know that that's our primary source of revenue is generated through our student enrollment. So it's an important number. We'll keep bringing it back.
Okay. Next up is just some updates from board committees. Board, the finance committee. Anything on that?
Well, we went over the SRS and all that.
So we really don't need to.
She just gave us preliminary look at what we just talked about, the S R funds.
Sorry, I kind of stole your thunder there.
No.
Then you'll have the budget.
Yeah, and we'll have the budget coming up. Board self evaluation.
I can give us an update on that. So I've been reaching out to the Minnesota School Boards Association about the board evaluating ourselves. And they suggested the best way to, to get going on this is to start with the end date. So pick a date that we're able to meet and do that two hour in-service where they come and go over our results with us and then work backwards from there. Then they'll know when to get us our questionnaires, when we need to get them back to them and so on. So I thought tonight, if it works, now we have two members not present, but we could try, we could attempt or soon by email or something, set a date, maybe August or something before the school year starts and we get busy again to have our in-service and then work backwards from there. So I just wanted to give an update that that seems like the most logical way to proceed with that. So do you think that the fact that there's four of us, should we do it by email later or should we attempt to set a date tonight?
Maybe not tonight. What, why don't you see if we could, could you pick a couple of dates, maybe early August that we could then just send it out and just try to get something that works?
Sure.
Because that, you know, July really slows down around here. Many people are gone. Admin staff is gone, so there's vacation, so.
And it would be two hours. I mean, do you think late afternoon for people who are working during the day or what should I suggest?
Well, you know, I have some flexibility and I think Brenda and Jeff do as well.
So I'll just throw up, we'll just get started by emailing. Okay.
Yeah, and just keeping in mind that the regular board meeting in August is the 19th. So just so you know that that's a point of reference, not that you need to put it on that date or near that date, but just so you know where the board meeting is, it's Thursday, August 19th.
And I'm gone the first week of August. Not that that matters either.
Well, no, but it would be good if we could slide it in there early, mid, the first half of August.
Okay.
Yeah, possibly that week of the ninth seems to be maybe something that would make sense.
Okay.
And I'm on the project oversight committee. We had a Zoom meeting the other morning and it was very short and I was on the wrong Zoom meeting and by the time I got in, I was the only one there.
I was there, I represent.
Yeah. So I picked up a few things, Brenda, you want to share?
Go for it.
Oh yeah, well, I think they're just working to get started.
Yeah.
Without even a schedule yet. We're pressing the contractor to get a schedule to the construction committee or the, basically our construction firm that takes care of watching over things. And they're just, I, I think it's really tough right now for anyone to commit. And so maybe that's one reason they don't have to schedule it, but we have to get it. So I don't know if it's been received yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have it.
By I C S.
Yeah, well, that one, there's four, five phases and they've got dates on it.
Okay.
I don't know if we're putting that on our website or not, or what we're doing with the dates, but they've got a schedule now. They were trying to work on it when we had the meeting, but no, they've got it.
Okay. So that's, they're just getting going over there. So I don't think there's anything else.
I'm not sure, you know, we got any, we have Andy here and we typically don't have him here. Would you mind stepping up, Andy, and just putting you on the spot a little bit here? But is there any updates? I mean, daily, you're working with the primary school project. So is there anything you want to share with the board?
I think Brenda, you're accurate. And the schedule was given out shortly after the meeting. There is some things that still need to be tightened up on the schedule. I guess you could say it's considered a preliminary schedule. Asbestos abatement has been ongoing this week. Outside of that, N A C has been onsite and they're starting to mobilize and get ready to do some demolition, things like that on the HVAC and things like that. So they'll be there Friday and Monday. And then the rest of the crew is just all kind of following in behind them. So just at the preliminary stages, as you guys discussed before.
And maybe just something for people that are listening, phase one, if you want to just maybe just kind of talk a little bit about the phases.
Yeah, phase one is going to be the toilet areas. And so that's the renovations that'll take place in the toilet areas. And then phase two, I believe, is the kindergarten area, music area and different areas that they'll be remodeling throughout the building. But main thing is, is the rush is to get going in the toilet areas. That is going to take the longest period of time to complete.
Yeah. And then as we had communicated, communicated to our communities, we're going to have the playground, playgrounds and the ball field shut down through basically Labor Day, just for safety around the project. And I don't think that can be stated enough that those are, we know they're very used spaces. We know that the community needs those and we're certainly asking and appreciating everybody's patience with that because it's going to be a great project. We're going to have a really great, you know, building when it's all said and done, but it does take a little bit of growing pains with it, or I should say, building pains with it as we work through it. So Mr. Rebe has done that over Taylor's Falls and the other principals have dealt with just how dealing with construction. And that goal is to really work with our contractor. Andy's been doing a great job along with Mrs. Shell and the others involved in the project to, to really get us on the timelines. And we know from our experience in the past that that isn't always easy to do. Contractors are having a hard time finding people as well. And we're working with a company called Rochon and we'll continue to work and track with them. So that's the plan.
Thank you, Andy.
There's a QCOM annual report and some update on that.
Yeah, we've got Janelle Herman, our QCOM coordinator here online. So we're going to turn it over to Janelle and you can let us know, we'll hear your voice, we'll let you know if you're. Okay, yep, there you are. Yep, you're loud and clear.
All right, great. I did send the annual report and it is attached to the board book. And I sent Eric a link to a little presentation. I'm not always super trusting of my network at home, so I thought it would be just easier to send that to Eric and see if he could queue that up. What that little presentation is, is a little positive thing that we do at the beginning of every oversight meeting throughout the year. We start with reasons for cake. We don't actually have cake. We just talk about what would be something that we're celebrating, what's something fun or positive that's going on in your buildings. And the oversight members will reach out to their buildings and share those little bits. So I'd like to start with some reasons for cake. So this was our guiding question this year for all of our oversight meetings. We pulled that right from M D E's guidance. And as I said, we like to start every agenda with just some positive moments. What are some things that are going on? And so these were some of the responses throughout the year. Admin can submit them, teachers can submit them. And it's just a really nice way to start our work together with finding something positive. I'm sorry if they advanced a little too quickly. I was trying to get the timings right, but there's just some little positive things that came out of what could have been a really, really negative gloomy year. I, I wanted to share with the board that throughout the year, as we met every month, we, we did find moments to smile and moments to celebrate. And we just always call them our reasons for cake. In the report that I submitted, you will see that there is information from 2019, 2020, as well as this current school year. Last spring, when everything shut down, M D E gave guidance to QCOM coordinators to say, you can give your annual report this year, you can combine it with next year, you can do whatever works best for your program. And I chose to wait and combine the two. So I don't want to take a lot of time. I know I presented last month as well, when I gave the, the upcoming MOU. So I would just say, I'm opening it up for questions, comments.
Well, I would say it's very complete, as I expect that you have done in the past, Janelle, and worked with you personally. So I see here something that is not surprising how well you've put this all together.
Thank you.
I don't, I, I probably need an hour and a half probably to look through everything. But well done.
Well, and I'm always open to follow up with questions if you see something later on and you want to know more about it.
So now I would just echo what Jeff had to say, that I just have learned with working with you on staff development. So on, there are so many details involved with this QCOM program. And I just want to thank you for your leadership and your hard work to keep this going for everyone and keep all the details straight. It's, it's an enormous amount of work. Thank you for your organization.
You're very welcome. It's, it, it's something that has been a growth curve for me, but I really feel that it is, is helping me grow as a teacher leader. And I really appreciate the support that I have with my team.
Anything else? Anyone? And? Well, I want to thank you too, Janelle. This is a lot of good information and just for the work you're doing there to put it together and keep this QCOM program moving forward and going forward.
I know it's something that our staff really appreciate and understand the value of. And I'm very grateful that our district is, is a QCOM district. Not every, not every school in Minnesota has this opportunity. And so I really appreciate the, the district values that and makes it a, a point of, of importance.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
With that, we'll move forward to the superintendent update.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of updates tonight, so I'm just going to just give a couple of brief things here. First of all, you know, just to wrap up to the school year, a week ago today was the last day for our, for our staff and yesterday would have been for the students. So it seems like, you know, in some respects, it maybe seems like a little while ago, but things move so fast. But on my lapel, I'm wearing, you know, just a little pin that was in my box. And I believe it probably came from Sarah Johnson and from Lakeside, but it just said, we made it together, you know, kind of the COVID-19 message. And I think there was something, oh, you sent it to me, Jason? Well, thank you, Mr. Rebe. Okay, yeah. On behalf of Sarah, Jason sent it to me. So, but it's just really a nice positive message for the, for their staff and something that I put an article in the paper about as well. I mean, it just, it was one of those things where we. I mean, it just, it was one of those things where we, we had to stay together in order to make it through, you know, a really challenging 15 months. And, and we certainly did. So very proud of everyone involved in that effort and, and over this time. You know, it definitely was a marathon, not a sprint. And, and we did cross that finish line. And I know for those that are at home listening, maybe on behalf of our staff, I know it's just a well deserved summer break. And we're looking forward to, to that opportunity for everyone to rejuvenate. But just a, a great finish to the school year. The only other update I have is just the summer school enrollment. I was asked kind of what are we looking at for summer school enrollment? So right now, as it sits, we have 150 elementary students for summer school, 67 at the middle school. And then 98 at the high school session one and 56 at the high school session two. And so certainly, you know, important for those high school students to be earning their credits. And of course they're signed up and ready to go. Those would be higher numbers than normal based upon just the impact of the overall, you know, COVID situation. But that's a total of 371, you know, summer school students. So that's a good, good, you know, chunk of students to be here for the summer. So that's, that commenced actually on the 14th with our high school, starting off on June 14th. And then for our elementaries, it'll be June 28th. So we're looking forward to and gearing up that. And, and Lakeside will be a very busy place. That's where everything is going to take place is over here. So it'll be a busy place.
Are those credit recoveries at the high school?
Yes, yes. Yep. So that's all I have.
All right. District goals updates up next.
Yeah, so I've asked the administration to help with doing district goal updates for the 2021 school year. So we're just going to go right down the list with goal number one is, is our safety for all students and staff here. And Eric Simmons is getting it up and ready so he can present on it. So he's putting up the slideshow for everyone. So. So Mr. Eric Simmons, our technology coordinator.
Hello. So our first goal is defined as Shasago Lakes staff and students will work together to increase the personal safety of every person in IST 2144. And for this year, that goal really turned into developing that safe and supportive plan for reopening our schools in the fall of 2020. So when we started walking through kind of what we've done in regard to safety in this school over the last year, all of those plans got detailed from like, what are we doing with our HVAC? And recycling air to Plexiglas, to transportation cleaning, like Robin mentioned, just all aspects of life. We spent responding to COVID is really where this goal shifted. So we spent a lot of time developing that COVID preparedness plan, working on that reopening plan, documenting a lot of what we were doing. Again, everything from cleaning to, to food service for the day to day life over the last year and a half. And into 21, 22, what we are proposing is really shifting that focus back towards emergency preparedness and communication, both internally and externally. And so doing some of the things that we have really not done a lot of in regard to kind of emergency planning and drills and that sort of thing that we just haven't done in, in COVID. So what we are proposing for that, I guess there's more to come at the August board meeting, is when we will be talking more about that 21, 22 focus. But that's kind of a general summary. COVID response is, is kind of the general summary for what we've been doing for safety over the last year. Any questions for me?
Just to share a little bit on that and expand too. One of the things that this group did focus on in, in this year was we did kick off for the first time, are revisiting, I guess, I think this happened a long time ago, but we brought back a collaboration that we're doing with the county. And so three times this year, we had virtual meetings with the county directors of Health and Human Services, Intruency and Probation, and the county attorney. And it really was Janet Ryder at the county, working with myself to, to, to bring this group together. And so that was really a great connection that we made and it really was all about COVID response. But now we will keep that group going. We will have three meetings again next year with all of our county folks to work together. We're also excited about this, just here in June, we're going to meet with our, our chief of police and then also sheriff Thian. And we're going to start working through our emergency preparedness plans related to their connectivity with, with things that happen. So we have all of our internal procedures from tornado drills to, to fire drills and those types of things. Evacuations, reunifications and all those things. But we're also talking about those most, you know, dangerous and pressing situations that law enforcement will be involved in. We're going to connect with them in June and then we're going to do a full training in August with our law enforcement officials to walk through with our administrative team, all those exercises that we need to go through. So we can properly train staff in our August workshops. And so as a community, we want everyone to know, we definitely take safety number one. And, and our law enforcement partners are a really strong part of what we do. We count on them to know about those latest procedures and to help us understand them. And we're excited, we've had a lot of great connection with our chief and with our, with our sheriff. And they're right on board and, and we're excited about that opportunity to collaborate. So that's going to be a part of Eric and the team's work, you know, going into this year as well. Sarah Johnson's here to talk about our second goal, which is the advocacy for every, every student here. And I'll let her take away what we've done and what we're hoping to do.
Sure. So goal number two is the Shasago Lake staff and students will work together to ensure that every student has an advocate at school. So COVID definitely put a huge twist on that for us this year. So the, each building has been spending some time looking at our SEL, that's your social emotional curriculum. So at the elementary level, we're using second step. So the, each building at the elementary, we've looked at our scope and sequence. We've been trying to realign and make sure that our students are getting some of those like really key foundational skills, how to go along with others, understanding differences, just owning your emotions, dealing with your emotions. These are all just really important things for our kiddos at the younger grades. And then at our middle school and high school, they've also been working on those SEL lessons as well. They don't use second step. But every building has made a commitment to giving dedicated time to helping our students deal with social emotional learning. Feel it's just going to be really key moving into our hopefully post-COVID lives here at school. Another huge focus for us this year was just connecting with staff and our students and families. And that took on a whole different meeting in COVID. I know here at Lakeside, we had one day a week where we were driving in our cars, trying to find kids that we haven't been able to find or connect with. I know the high school and middle school struggled with this as well. So connecting with families took on a little bit, a huge different twist for us this year. We are connecting with families in a lot of different ways, not only like email and phone call, but we found texting was highly effective in getting ahold of some of our staff and students. So anything and everything we could do to try to make sure our students were still included in school and still participating in their education. And then the other thing that we spent a lot of time on is not only was, were the community just incredibly generous with helping us at school through the pandemic, but we wanted to give back to that. So the buildings all had different charitable organizations that we were supporting, whether it was family pathways. I think Jason, you guys had a serial drive. All elementaries banded together and did a food drive. They did a compassion drive at the high school and we still didn't want to lose that, like we're all one community. And we feel that that's really important for all of our students to see. So moving into next school year, you're going to hear a lot about what SEL looks like at each one of the buildings. We all have specific plans that we're working on. There's also a district level plan for us to use some common definitions and make sure they're all talking the same language. And then coupled in with that is the conversation that we were hopeful that would get approved with some additional mental health support for our students and also for our staff next year. So advocacy will continue to be a big key of what we do. Any questions I could answer for you?
That we proposed as an admin team as well. So Sarah Schmidt, our, our director of curriculum will walk us through that.
Right. So our goal with critical thinking skills got a little delayed with last year. As you know, I presented the community survey results to you previously. So we had surveyed our community probably a year and a half ago, right before COVID pandemic hit in March, and asked them like, what's important to you at each level? What is most important to you? And the, the same answer came, no matter what the level, early childhood, middle school, elementary, high school. They all said the two most important things were a love of learning and building critical thinking skills, which is what drove this goal. So our plan for this year was to bring that information to our school district and start developing some action steps around it. But everybody was a little bit overwhelmed with COVID, that the only two steps we really got done is the board presentation. And then we presented it to the district staff development team to talk through what that could look like. We would like to continue to work on this goal next year since it kind of got delayed. But we also realized the other main like academic type goal besides building critical thinking skills is being responsive to students' needs because of the pandemic. And so we kind of are doing twofold with it, more of a short term, immediate response of looking at where students are at and how we can meet them and grow them from there next year, kind of that short term goal, while working on critical thinking skills kind of in the background, which would be like, what's our common definition of what critical thinking is? How would we define it? How would you measure it? What are ways you can build that in the classroom? So the critical thinking goal will be more like on the background next year, like doing the work behind the scenes, while immediately we'd be focusing, focusing on the students' needs.
Well, Sarah, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, but we've had this conversation, you know, in, in, I guess, kind of the, the media you hear about learning loss, you hear about catching kids up and that type of thing. Kind of what is our train of thought, as we've discussed this as an admin team, about catching kids up or dealing with learning loss? How would you say we've kind of phrased that?
I think the, the difficult part with the phrase learning loss is not recognizing what they did gain last year. You know, they survived a pandemic and they learned skills that may be, aren't normally taught in schools, like time management, prioritizing your needs, taking care of your social wellbeing, you know, watching little brothers and sisters while learning from home on a computer. So just recognizing that kids did learn, it just might not have been traditional. And also recognizing that our teachers can't just take them from like, I'm going to teach everything I normally taught, plus catch them up on everything else they missed. Like that's just not humanly possible. So we've really kind of looked at it as we're going to meet them where they're at and we're going to try to grow them from there because that's what's within our capabilities. Any questions on this goal? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. One thing I, I did want to mention too, and thank you, Mrs. Spray for inviting me. Lakeside will be very busy this summer, but I didn't, and I had it in the back of mind. I know there's programming taking place at Taylor's Falls as well. So on the other end of district, I know we will have our early childhood programming at Taylor's Falls. We'll also, we also have our childcare over there as well, right? So Taylor's Falls still has quite a bit going on. And Mr. Reby reminded me that when he needs a little bit of, I need to go see some students, there's still students to go see in his building. So, and really the main reason why, just for everyone recognizes Lakeside is going to be so busy is that primary school will not have any programming there this summer due to the construction. So everything is going to be right here. And of course, the middle school and high school has activity as well, but that's what's going on.
All right. Moving on, we do have a note regarding the April 15th minutes. There was a recommendation that we would change those or make a change to them. They've already been accepted. Upon review by legal counsel, determined that this, it's not something that we would do. I just wanted to bring that to a point. I don't know if there's any questions or discussion regarding that. But I would open it up for that at this point. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. These items include the minutes of May 24th and June 9th. All the claims and accounts. As well as personnel items, which include resignations, some leaves, retirement. Many contracts, a number of extracurricular contact, contracts. More than a full page that we have written. And there's, I didn't see it. A transportation reimbursement request in there, but maybe there was one. No, I don't believe. Anyway. All of these, not all of the items here, but the financial part of them is always reviewed by Brenda Carlson, our treasurer, with Robin Vosberg Torgerson. And any questions are brought forward there and anything that we might not be sure of. I don't know if there's anything else. If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I still move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion, any questions? Now I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. There is no old business on the agenda, so we'll move on to new business. We do have the long-term facilities maintenance tenure plan up. Our, I don't know who's to speak to that.
Yep, you get both of us, Andy and I.
All right.
Oh, thanks. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So Andy and I are very excited to be up here to share our fiscal year '23, actually LTFM plan with you tonight. This is a usual and customary report that we do each year and the board has to approve in either June or July. And then we send this report into the Minnesota Department of Education for their approval. So the report you can see up here tonight, and it's just a little snippet of it because it's very tiny. If you look on board book, it's very small. But this is the revenue side of it. And this is an MDE worksheet that they sent to us. It's generated by our adjusted pupil units. And if you look in FY '23, it is our estimated FY '23 adjusted pupil units of 3642. They take our district's average building age of 31.7, 31.75. And then the formula allowance is $380. And that gives us our initial, initial revenue of just under $1.3 million for LTFM. The LTFM bonds then come off. See if I can get down here. Okay, we move over to the expenditure side then, but it comes off the top. The LTFM bonds come off the top of that. No, I need to go back to revenue, sorry. Right down there. Um. So our LTFM bonds, sorry, come off the top of that. So that's a little under $500,000 and that leaves us with about $800,000 in the general fund. From that, it's broken down into state aid and levy. Our state aid is about $268,000 and our levy is about $537,000. So then if I move over to the expenditure side, it shows our breakdown of where we spend our LTFM funds. If you remember, or if you recall, a few years ago, health and safety funds used to be rolled or used to be separated and they rolled them into the LTFM fund. If you see at the top here, these used to be our health and safety. Physical hazards, materials, asbestos, fire safety. So they're all coming out of health and, or out of LTFM now. If you look in the base year, you can see these numbers look pretty high, our fire safety. And there's 900,000 there and the mechanical systems. This also includes Fund Six, which is our construction fund. But you'll look down here, you've got Fund One, which has a fund balance at the end of the year. And then Fund Six will be zeroed out at the end of this year, you see right there. So we're white, we're taking care of that fund balance in Fund Six. But LTFM, which is long-term facilities maintenance, if I didn't say that, I know we have a lot of acronyms. I'm sorry about that. It does, it is a reserve fund balance and it carries over. There's one other number I want to show you here. If you look in the next fiscal year, sorry, FY '22, I'll go slower. There's a larger number here under site projects right here, the 650,000. And that is our turf replacement at the high school. So that's a project that's going to happen in FY '22. And you're going to hear me talk about that again when we talk about the budget. And then going forward, there's 75,000 in each year because we, we need to set aside that money again to be able to replace that in another 10 years. So that's all you have to listen to me about. I'm going to turn it over to Andy and he's going to tell you about some of the summer projects that we're doing with the LTFM money in this fiscal year '22.
Thanks, Robin. Over the course of this summer, we will be completing several project paid, excuse me, several projects paid for by the LTFM funds. The selection process for these projects include input from building principals, ICS consulting, state of Minnesota fire inspector, and long-term facility maintenance planning. Other contributing factors include the primary school renovation project and summer school programming. Here are the list of the projects that we'll be completing this summer. At the high school, we're going to be installing a new 40-ton dual-circuit condensing unit, which provides air conditioning from the admin area over to the language arts classroom. Also, and also cools off the media center and the computer lab inside there. So it's a very large unit that'll be replaced this summer. It's been very problematic, so we're excited to get a new unit put in there. And then we have some state fire code, excuse me, state fire code mandated improvements that were required to make. And those are the installation of illuminated exit signs in science rooms 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. We need to also add signs in egg rooms 1 and 2, and also the fax 1 room. We need to also add signs in egg rooms one and two, and also the fax one room. We'll be installing panic hardware in the auto shop in the corridor that leaves the auto shop and also the fax room door. And we'll be installing physical barriers in the form of a railing in the metal shop foundry area to protect against accidental contact of hot surfaces. We'll be installing sprinkler coverage under the metal shop store room, yes, excuse me, the metal shop store room under the HVAC trunk line. And we'll be providing fire protection of the spray booth in the wood shop on both sides of the filtration system. All of those items I listed under the state fire code that were mandated to do those items. The total cost for that is the AC unit is seventy-six thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. And the fire marshal required upgrades are about twenty-six thousand dollars. At the middle school, we'll be repairing some boiler room piping that's been leaking and installing an isolation valve to make ease, excuse me, future repairs easier. We're doing some paint work in the wood shop. And then we'll also be doing some state fire code mandated improvements as well. Those improvements include installing five illuminated exit signs, two of which will be in the band, one in music, one in life skills, and one in collect. We'll be installing panic hardware and correct, in correcting the door spring direction in the life skills room. We'll install the fire alarm protection in the gym air handler and also in the band storage area. And we'll be installing fire suppression in the spray booth on both sides of the filters at the middle school as well. The estimated cost for the middle school is the boiler room repairs are forty-seven hundred dollars. The wood shop painting upgrade is five thousand and the fire marshal upgrades are seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. At Taylor's Falls, we're going to be replacing door entry nine. There's some severe decay and rot that's going on where we can almost see outside from the inside of the building. So that door entry is going to be getting replaced. We're going to be installing solar crosswalk signal signage. The district already has this signage. I think Mr. Reeve was able to get that through a grant. And so we're just going to be putting that to use by getting it installed. And then we're going to be doing some paint work on the exterior facing gym doors that face the south. A little bit of work on the facade above those doors. Fix up some, some peeling HVAC lubers. And then doing some patch and paint repair in the gym that was left over from the removal of the scoreboard and other things that were removed out of the gym at Taylor's Falls. Estimated cost for the door entry is fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. The solar crosswalk installation is twenty-five hundred dollars. The gym door and louver painting is twenty-five hundred. And the upper gym area painting is five thousand dollars. And then lastly, here at Lakeside, we've just got one fair code requirement, which is a second floor exit sign that needs to be in the corridor up by the elevator. And then we're going to be doing some door repair. We've got some minor chipping and things for the veneer of the interior doors in this building. And the approximate cost for that is a thousand dollars. So the total project cost that we're going to undergo this summer is a hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Anybody have any questions?
I think it's just, I want to mention too, just a real thankfulness for, number one, our community who has created these amazing facilities. And of course, we've known we've done a ton of construction around here over the last four years. So we're very thankful for that, but also to Andy and the whole custodial team. Just an outstanding year of working through a lot of things and they're going to be very busy this summer. Certainly working through that, but a great team that's got, got a really good plan for the summer. And then just want to mention our staff. Our staff and our students throughout the year were involved in cleaning and maintaining buildings as well, like we've never have done before. And I think all those things are really important as we recognize just what happens within the whole custodial realm. It definitely was a total team effort throughout the year and continues to be. And, you know, we're just very thankful for what everyone's been able to accomplish in that area. So it's been an outstanding year and under Andy's leadership, we're looking forward to just continue to really take good, take great care of our facilities and just tying in also community education. It's great to see our community education programs expanding and opening back up again, our Wildcat Community Center. One of, you know, the charges I have to Michelle Kleistick, community education and to all of our admin is just let's keep getting people into our buildings so they can see how well they're maintained and what those taxpayer dollars are going for. And under, under the leadership of the entire team, but our entire staff, we're getting people into our buildings. It's nice to be open again, it's nice to see people again. And it's nice that people can see how well the, the buildings are maintained and, and what we've built over the last four years. And that's one thing we've talked about as an admin team. We almost feel like the theme for the fall should be the grand reopening, you know, because we're really want to bring people back into our buildings again. So we're excited about the work that we'll get done this summer and thanks to the two of you, so.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We do, we do require approval on the LTFM.
I'll make a motion to approve the LTFM plan.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion or questions? Being none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, we need to approve the graduating class of twenty-twenty-one, they're listed in our board book packet. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
The standard, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, also up next then is the Trio Contract. Trio Wolf Creek Charter School, that we are the sponsoring entity and work very closely with them. We have the contract in front of us. Any significant issues regarding that, Dean, or?
No, I, I think just, you know, what you have in front of you exemplifies not only work with Trio Wolf Creek, but, you know, Sarah Schmidt works closely with them, Robin is on their, meets with their board and is a part of that. So I don't know if there's any, anything to add to that, just other than we need approval to continue to work with them and provide the services that we provide. And, and we receive the, the revenue, you know, some revenue back from them for our services as well, which we bill them for, so.
Give a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Being none all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, up next is a budget presentation by a business director.
You guys are so lucky, me again. I know, I just apologize. Sorry. All right, you've got to have some levity, right?
Right.
All right, so what I have for you tonight, obviously, is the preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. This is the culmination of the past nine months of work. We started this preliminary budget process in October with the initial review of enrollment and then started talking about assumptions and the projections for the next fiscal year in November with the finance committee. As we're creating the budget, we keep our district goals and strategic plan in front of us. You, as a board, also had some, some priorities in this budgeting process. You had early learning, intervention, and recurring costs. In the document that I'm presenting tonight, I've included a lot of information. Information is power and I'm doing my best to empower the board with as much information as possible. This slide describes the financial structure of our school district. We are an independent school system operating under a local elected six-member board. Our financial records are maintained and prepared by, on a modified or full accrual basis of accounting. Our school board policy recommends a minimum general fund balance of twelve to fifteen percent of operating expenditures. And the school board is required to adopt a budget by June thirtieth of each year for the fiscal, for the following fiscal year. So what's the purpose of a budget? To provide a financial plan with estimates of proposed expenditures and revenues. And I'll say this again, when I was presenting, what I said when I was presenting the revised budget, a projection's only as good as the day it's presented tonight. It may be only as good as the minute that it is presented, since the next agenda, agenda item is a recommendation to approve three additional FTEs due to class size. On the next few slides, I want to share the different funds that we have and that we operate in the Shisago Lake School District. We have a general fund, we have a food service fund, we have a community service fund, we have a construction fund, we have a debt service fund, and we have a custodial fund. Of course, the general fund is the one we talk about the most. It's the fund that we use to account for all revenues and expenditures, not accounted for anywhere else. It's the main fund that we use for all educational activities. It also has many reserve fund balances. On this slide, I've also linked in the fund balance presentation that I presented to the board last winter. I don't remember exactly which month it was. But if you'd liked more information on fund balances, it is linked in there. The food service fund, I think that's pretty self-explanatory, breakfast and lunch. Our community service fund is comprised of five main components, each with its own fund balance. Our construction fund is used to record all of the operations of a building project. Our debt service fund is used to record the revenue and expenses of a district's outstanding indebtedness. The revenue is the levied amount that we received and with the expenses being the payment of principal and interest on the bonds. And then one last fund that we have is a custodial fund, or as we call it, our scholarship fund. And this is a fund that is strictly a flow-through fund for scholarship money for students. It's not our custodians' fund. I know some people, I think, oh, it's a fund just for custodians. No, it's actually our scholarship fund. So now we get to the nuts and bolts of the fiscal year twenty-two budget. We also always start with assumptions. We start with enrollment and this year being one of the most challenging years, at least in my career, to determine what to assume or predict for enrollment. We assumed a one percent increase on the basic general education formula. We assumed a loss of compensatory funds, an increase in special education cross-subsidy. And we have quite a few contracts that are still open as of July first and will be. And we assumed an average of a two-point-five percent increase in all expenditures. The enrollment that we assume for next year is three thousand three oh nine. That included all of our Wildcat Academy students returning and fifty percent of our homeschool, our new homeschool students returning as well. Then we had, I wanted to show a change in our enrollment chart. So this shows while we're predicting that our enrollment is going to increase for twenty-two, we're still not back to the levels that we were pre-pandemic. If you see our actual numbers in sixteen and seventeen, we're still higher than what we're estimating for next year right now. At least what we built our budget on. Of course, we're hoping that those numbers are still going to keep increasing for FY twenty-two. This slide shows the additional general fund adjustments that we're making in FY twenty-two. If you recall, we had savings in FY twenty-one of a little over six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as well. That along with the nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars and the three hundred and seventy-five thousand of S R two funds makes up the deficit that the district was facing for FY twenty-two. Now, this slide is usually my very last slide, but tonight I've duplicated it. So I'm sharing it at this point and then I'm going to share it again at the end of the presentation. I want to show it up front. I'm going to show the front, the end product before we talk about all the changes that are taking place. So our goal with this budget was to break even. We didn't cut anything additional to build a fund balance. So anything that we save in twenty-twenty-one, the twenty-twenty-one school year, will help us build up and keep whatever fund balance that we can. That's our general fund unassigned amount, that's zero. So you can see general unassigned. We're estimating at the end of twenty-one, that's seven hundred and thirteen. Our change is a negative seven thirteen, and so we're estimating that zero. In the general fund restricted, we're spending the one million dollar sale of old Lakeside building to help with the construction project at the primary school. And so that money is in that operating capital fund balance and that's a restricted fund balance. We're also spending six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace our turf at the high school, which you just heard Andy and I talk about when we presented the LTFM projects. The district is in saving that amount of money each year to replace that turf because it's at the end of life this summer. We're showing an increase in the food service and community service funds for FY twenty-two. And we plan on using up the remaining funds in the construction fund with the primary school construction project. And then just a slight change in the debt service fund.
Robin, just one thing to clarify, on that turf we're talking about, it's not going to be replaced this summer. It's going to be replaced in fiscal year twenty-two, correct?
Correct, but fiscal year twenty-two starts July first, but it's going to be next June.
Next, yeah, next.
But it'll be in that fiscal year.
And if I recall, there was an estimated life of that turf and we far extended that estimated life.
Is that correct? We did extend it, yes.
Yes, so it lived longer than we thought. We've been putting away money knowing it had to be replaced every certain amount of time and we've gone past that.
Yes, yes. And if you saw in the LTFM spreadsheet, we're going to start putting that money away again. That's our plan.
For the next time, it has to be replaced, yep.
Okay, so it doesn't surprise us again. We don't want any surprises.
No.
Saying, going back to general fund, this slide shows the FY twenty-two preliminary revenue budget of a little over forty-one million dollars. And that's a slight decrease from the FY twenty-one revised budget. Keeping in mind that that FY twenty-one revised budget had close to a million dollars of this Corona relief funds or the CRF funds. I know we have additional CARES funding as well, but when our assumptions were created for that FY twenty-two budget, we only included the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of S R two funds. You heard me talk earlier about the S R one funds and using some of those funds to cover more of our but-for COVID expenses in the general fund, food service and community service funds. But those are not included in this number, in these numbers. I will have to bring back those numbers with a revised budget. Of course, along with the FTEs, if they're approved, and any other changes that the legislature comes up with or any other, any other many changes that could happen in the next few days, weeks, months. So then with this revenue slide, again, it shows the general fund. Then in the food service fund, we're fairly, showing a fairly substantial increase in revenue for food service. I do need to clarify something that I actually said at the last board meeting. And I brought forward an increase in lunch prices. And I do have to state that both breakfast and lunch will be free for all students again next year. The increase in federal reimbursement, along with having à la carte sales, will add to that increase in revenue for FY twenty-two. So breakfast and lunch are free for all students again next year. So I misspoke last month. Correction. In community service, we're also seeing a large increase in revenue from FY twenty-one and we're hoping to get back to those FY nineteen and early FY twenty programming that we have, have had in community service. I'm going to tell you, it was not easy budgeting for these two funds. I sat with both of the directors for those programs and we did a three-year look back, going back to FY nineteen, to see what a normal year looked like. With both of them being new, me being new, we had to see what, what a normal year looked like for community service and for food service. In construction, we're looking at a small amount of interest income. And then our levy revenue in the debt service, a small amount there, and then the scholarship revenue as well. With expenses in the general fund, the majority of the increase is in that reserve fund, which included the capital expenses and that LTFM for turf. Food service and community service also seeing increases in expenses, working their way back to pre-pand, pre-pandemic operations. The increase in construction fund is remainder of that primary school project. In the debt service fund, the increase is in the amount of principal we are scheduled to pay out in this fiscal year. Principal's increasing, interest is decreasing, exactly what you want to happen when you're paying off bonds. And then the scholarship fund showing the same amount of expenditures as last year. So this, this slide shows the change in fund balance for each fund. My goal is to show you that the changes in revenue and expenditures in many different ways. This shows the revenue or expenses, or vice versa, the expenses over revenue. In the general fund, I'm breaking it out between the restricted fund and the unassigned fund. On the second line, which is the restricted, it shows the change using the, the million dollars of capital for primary project and that's six fifty for the LTFM turf project. And in the unassigned fund, we're showing that change in fund balance that brings the unassigned fund balance to zero. And food service, we're showing that slight increase in the fund balance for FY twenty-two, along with an increase in the community service fund as well. That construction fund's showing that large decrease and that's using up the remainder of those funds. By the end of FY twenty-two, debt service showing that slight decrease along with scholarship.
Now, Robin, one thing to point out, I think some might remember the sale of Lakeside. You know, basically what we, what we received from that was just, just slightly under one point two million. We're using a million of that for the construction project over at, at primary school. That means the remainder of that would stay within the capital fund, right? The two, roughly two hundred thousand would stay within the capital fund. But we are using a million of the sale of Lakeside funds to, to help with primary school.
And once again, I have that estimated fund balance, so this is the one that I duplicated. I showed it at the beginning and now I'm showing at the end, the exact same slide. Whoops, let me say thank you up. And I'll say it one more time, this is a projecting, projection based on assumptions. It's only as good as the minute, I'm going to say minutes, that I'm presenting it. There are a lot of assumptions and factors that went into creating this budget. There are quite a few changes that have already happened. There are quite a few changes that have already happened and will continue to happen as it, that will affect it. As of today, the legislature has not settled on a general education increase. Enrollment is changing. We're proposing the addition of some elementary teachers, and those are just some of the big ticket items that are happening. I thank you for your help and your work on this with me, and I would request the approval of the FY '22 preliminary budget. Then I can say thank you.
Good job, Robin. That's a lot of work.
Second.
All right, comments or any questions from Robin?
Robin, it's been a lot of work to keep up with the changes this year. Kids coming in, kids going out, food being covered, food not being covered, COVID expenses, what we can use the funds for. I mean, it's.
It's been a challenging year for everyone.
Yeah, but thank you so much for your time and effort.
All right, other questions or comments? Being none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of accepting this budget for fiscal year '22, '23? Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm sorry, next fiscal year. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, up next then is the full-time equivalents we were planning on adding. Mr. Jennison, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so background wise, I mentioned already, and we do have Mr. Reby here and Mrs. Johnson if need be, but what we had talked about back in the budget, budget reduction process was we knew that we would have, if all of our Wildcat Academy students were to return and other enrollment that could potentially come in, we'd have some pinch points with class sizes that we'd be uncomfortable with, that Taylor's Falls 3rd grade, Lakeside 4th grade, and then either K1 at primary school. And we have the potential need to add another section as well. That has come to realization with the hard work of our, our elementary principals and their staff. They have been calling. Basically, direct contact was the best thing to do to figure out what people were intending for next year. So what we're predicting for enrollment certainly appears that we need to add that 3rd grade teacher at Taylor's Falls, add a 4th grade teacher at Lakeside, and add either a K1 at primary school. And Mrs. Shell's not able to be here tonight to, to speak to that, but we, we have seen enrollment from her each and every week. And then how many are still undecided maybe for kindergarten? There are those that they haven't been able to get in contact with. Same thing for Mr. Reby would be keeping track of yet who's still out there that isn't confirmed. And then, of course, for Mrs. Johnson as well. So we continue to really try to do the best job with that. And of course, we always say, until we see the whites of their eyeballs on the first day of school, you don't really know for sure. But you have a pretty good idea. By open house, certainly, but I was a 4th grade teacher, and there were times where I was changing nameplates by, by day one. So we know that that all happens, but our best prediction at this point says we're going to need those teachers. And, you know, I'll put you on the spot a little bit, principal, sorry, but I think class size, let's just have Mr. Reby if you wouldn't mind stepping up. So if you were looking at 3rd grade, Taylor's Falls, if we add that position, that, that next teacher, you're going to have class sizes of what?
Will be around 19 and 20 in three sections if we add that third teacher. If we don't, we're going to be at 29s, potentially 30s with a few people that have not yet decided that we've been in touch with.
Yep, yep, thank you. So, you know, one thing to look at is, yeah, that, that class size of 20, that sounds really, really ideal and nice. Little bit of room to grow there too, you know, potentially, if, you know, so if you're listening out there and you know somebody who wants to move to Taylor's Falls in 3rd grade, that would be great. But, you know, those are the types of things we can never quite predict where anybody's going to go, but, you know, that would be certainly some room to grow a little bit in there. But again, if you're a teacher of 30 or 20, 3rd graders, that wouldn't be too bad either, you know. So I think those are, that would be what's happening there. And then, you know, Sarah, if you wouldn't mind stepping up and just talking a little about what was happening at Lakeside and what those class sizes would be.
Sure. So in the budget reductions, we were anticipating six sections in 4th grade. That would put us at 31 or 32 in classes next year. If we moved to seven sections, we'd be at 27 and 28. So not the 20 that you get, yeah, but still better than 31 and 32. So if we move to seven sections, that will, that's what we'd be at at Lakeside.
And then for the primary school, again, we don't have updated numbers for this week, but we were, we were definitely recommending, based upon where Michelle would like to put either one of the, the section that's added would be the BK or one, but to really meet those goals over there as well. So I'm just going to look back the last update. Oh, you do? Yeah, I'm looking back at her last update I had was from June 3rd. Yeah, go ahead.
So, so keep in mind, they were looking at eight or nine sections in kindergarten or first grade. By adding another teacher at primary, they're able to go nine sections and nine sections. So their class sizes would be 20 to 21 in kindergarten and 21 to 22 in first grade.
So that would bring them to a total of 18 sections.
Yep.
And are there any other grade levels that were teetering? Or are we in good shape now, do you think?
We do have one that we're keeping an eye on at Taylor's Falls, and that would be Taylor's Falls 2nd grade. So Mr. Reby's keeping us apprised on that and, and, and fourth as well. He's giving me the signal. Fourth grade as well as both that are being, we're, we're watching those. And, you know, just from past precedents, you know, I guess our past history, I should say, we, we have added positions, you know, towards the end of the summer, depending upon where those numbers come in at. So we're still watching those. We aren't recommending tonight necessarily we make a move on those yet, but we're getting at that point where we, we may need to bring that back to you potentially in the future here, but right now we feel really solid with the three positions that we're speaking to, and we're monitoring those other ones.
Okay, we need a motion to approve these.
I'll make a motion to approve the three full-time teaching positions.
I'll second it.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just thank you again to the principals for calling all those families and trying to track down who's going to show up and who isn't. It's an enormous amount of work, and it's important to know the number, so thank you. It's helpful.
All for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Up next is LEA representative. I don't have any information on that.
The background is we just need to designate who our, you know, our local education agency, that's us, who our representative are. And I believe it's myself is listed on there and, and Sarah Schmidt as well, so, yeah.
We just have to approve you.
Yeah.
Sarah, that's kind of like an award, I think.
It's basically where all the state reports are being filed, so she's responsible for much of our state reporting, so we are thankful for Sarah.
All right, we need to approve Dean and Sarah's that.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. And then Taylor's Falls handbook changes. Anything major? We don't have any information on that.
Jason, if you wouldn't mind, since you're here, step up. If there's anything in particular you want to point out about a handbook change, so.
Or is it just approval?
I think it's just an approval. We, we just updated some, some components, added links in as opposed to having references to other documents. It's more, we're kind of moving to an electronic format. Just updated some language that needed to be looked at over time, like our field trip procedures for chaperones. It's, it's a lot of logistical types of things in both of our student and our staff handbooks. So nothing truly earth-shattering. We did bump our school day up five minutes. We're finding that buses were getting in, and that's an extra five minutes in the morning. We need to get that day going and get the day started off. So I confirmed that with Mr. Nickley over at 4.0 as we plan for next year, and as of right now, that's our plan as well there too.
Okay, so we need to approve those changes.
I saw move.
I'll second it.
Any other questions or discussions? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then our association with Schools for Equity and Education is up for renewal. We need to renew that.
You know, I would comment on this a little bit. I know we've received some questions from the community about membership in this, in the Schools for Equity and Education, and I've been a part of this almost since the time I got on the school board. And I'll just talk about a couple of things. This is an association that is dedicated to bringing equity to how we fund schools. And their main focus is dealing with inequity that it's due to how property taxes can vary from district to district, and so that the playing field is not necessarily level for all communities in that the tax impact is much higher in communities like ours where we don't have a large industrial base. And so they work really hard to lobby to just equalize the playing field with school funding. Now, I'm not saying they take care of all aspects of school funding. For example, it's been brought up that there's a big difference in compensatory aid between districts like ours and big districts like Minneapolis and St. Paul in terms of how much compensatory aid we get. The C has not been as involved with that part of the funding disparities, but they work very hard on the property tax side of it to try to make that a more fair system for schools. In addition to this, those of us that go to these meetings, it's school leaders from across the state, and we have speakers there from the legislature, so we're always kept abreast of like what's happening at the Capitol in terms of schools. We have speakers on things like dyslexia and mental health initiatives, and we have people from the Department of Education that update us on changes and rules. And so just the resource they provide in terms of updates on what's happening in the realm of education, I have found to be vital to leading the school district. So although, you know, one particular community member has brought up a lot that, some things he'd like to see different in terms of what C represents, and we could certainly talk to the C people about that. There's a lot of good that they do do and a huge resource that they provide. So for me, it's just been a privilege to be a part of that group. These are people working hard to bring more equity in the way schools are funded. So that's my perspective about C. I guess if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer what I know.
I'd love to see them out of a job, and let me explain. I hope that they do such a great job that there's no need for them.
Right.
And this compensatory revenue was shocking to me when Bob Barrett brought that up, and I shared it with you, just that. And I, you said they don't work with that too much, and I'm not sure what benefit. So it's a lot of good information, and I know we're organized to try to get better equity in our funding, but for $5,000 roughly, what do we, what have we got? And I, I know it's good information and some things like that. What has changed over the years and how many years have we been in C? And I'm new on the board, so I don't, I don't honestly know the answer to that question.
I mean, from my perspective, I know that there's years because of their lobbying that that equity formula has been changed. I know that they were a part of this school districts that actually brought a lawsuit against the state of Minnesota in terms of not following their constitutional obligation to equitably fund schools. So they're, they had their voice in as a part of that.
That must be like a quarter of a million dollars. Is it 55 schools that belong to it?
It's 50 something.
Something like that. And is it about the same amount of money for each one, or is it different based?
I think it's based on your enrollment.
So I'm not sure about that, but.
And it provides a collective voice at the legislature to say, we're all similar in that we don't have a big industrial tax base. So we're all in the situation when we go out for a levy, it costs our taxpayers a lot more. So it sort of brings a unified voice to that message at the legislature to say, we don't like the way this funding is working for our school districts. And I think that collective voice is important. And frankly, I think our main lobbyist for this group does a lot of education of freshman legislators, like this is how school funding works. Here's where there's problems with it. This is what we need to improve. So I think it's an important collective message that we bring through that group.
I just wanted to read what Bob said, and maybe like you said, C doesn't really maybe affect our work with the compensatory funding.
Well, from what I understand, Jeff, that compensatory part of it is a separate equity issue than the property tax.
Then what C works with.
And it's in law, so it's.
Sure, it's a state law.
Yeah, so the legislators are the one that have to change that.
Sure. And I guess for people maybe listening or somebody that may be watching this later, yeah, I just wanted to read this. It's a formula, compensatory revenue is a formula based on two factors. Low-income students and the density of low-income students. State law would need to be changed, so there were, that's your thing there, that state law would have to be changed. And probably need lobbying around this to have that changed because the amount of money. Minneapolis School District, for example, gets $2,531 per qualifying student of compensatory revenue. North Branch gets, in comparison, 792, 2531 for Minneapolis, 792. La Shasago Lakes get 661 for qualifying student. Now, when I look at those numbers, 2531 and 792 and 661, what we get? Well, that's $1,900 different than a Minneapolis school gets for their children than, than we do, and that's a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So there is some things there lobbying-wise that, and I don't know how we do that through C or if it's done whatever, because we have these 55 people and there's legislators and senators, and he said especially senators, because they're the ones that usually start the state law change. And maybe a group of us need to go down from these 55 schools and set up to have a discussion with this. Because when I look at the numbers, I go, well, that's just not fair. And I don't know what we can do about it. It is just new to me. And I would think people looking at those numbers, and Robin, I bet you'd love to have $1,900 per student to work with. We wouldn't be in a, having issues, and we could do the things that we want to do. So that's the only thing. I think it's just the, you know, how information or truth sets us free, or at least it's, it's certainly revealing here in this case that our state law is kind of messed up.
Yeah, and I, I think I directed you when you communicated to me, to Brad, the executive director, only because it's a fair question to say, what about this side of the inequity issue? What can we do? Can we bring a voice to it? And, and see what he has to say too. And this is an organization that's working for equity, so in financial.
Yeah, and, and you're on that committee, and you said I could do that, and I, and yet I would really be an interesting thing to sit down and talk to him. And first of all, I'd want to verify the numbers.
Sure.
But it just seems something that we all, all these schools around us, these 55 schools, maybe we could get together en masse, because there's power in the people of maybe speaking to this in a way to get. It's really hard to take away from one and give to another, I realize those things, but that is a pretty simple factual disparity. That's a pretty easy thing for people to see.
But on the property tax end, there's some factual disparities that are pretty clear too.
Yeah.
Their school district's getting $1,800 in a levy, and we're at 200.
Yeah.
And there's, that's a difference of 1,600 in property tax levies because of, well, whether they vote for it or not, but also the impact on the taxpayers in that school.
Right, so you have two things. I'm sorry for taking more time on this, but it is, there's a lot of discussion about, do you really need the money? I think we really need the money, and the disparities in compensatory aid is way more than we'd ever ask in a, in a levy and the amount of money that is voted across the state, where we've talked about $4 million less funding that Shasago Lakes have compared to the average school in Minnesota. So I'm just going to stand by those numbers, both here, which one, the compensatory, we have not discussed, but the other 4 million we have discussed.
Right.
And we are less there, and, and that is a factual thing that I think all of us would stake our reputation on, that we need to have more funds, and we are not equal now. There has been really good discussion about what are you going to use the funds for, and I think that's a valid statement, but I think we can come up with a really good idea what we'd use those funds for.
Right. Well, I think too, certainly Jeff, with your background too, with Ed Minnesota and their lobbying efforts too, it's similar. I mean, there's all these groups coming there and lobbying to, you know, basically have a platform of here's what we really need the legislature to look at. Now, from the C standpoint, we do, they do facilitate that visit for us as well. So it's something that we have had a community team to go down. We've had parents, we've had administrators, we have board members that can go down and be a part of that C day at the Capitol. You've got, you know, we've got Ed Minnesota day at the Capitol, we've got the MASA. We've got the different groups coming down and talking about what is needed. So certainly, you know, your expertise and that background is going to be real supportive of a group that could go down there and, you know, certainly be, we've had board representation there, and, and, you know, Brad Lundell and, and Deb Griffiths have been right there with us. And of course, they've come out here and done presentations too, and we do think that that's probably something as we continue to talk about our funding scenario here in Shasago Lakes, we probably want to bring Deb back out here and have a presentation for our community as we talk about those disparities and why they exist and how they can be mitigated, hopefully. You know, but again, it's, it's a, it's a collective effort. Like you said, 55 schools here, that certainly does happen that we get together, obviously at the meetings, but also when they bring C day to the Capitol, they bring down several schools on a certain day, and so there is that. But, you know, certainly in those meetings at C as well, those things could be talked about very clearly as to what, you know. But, you know, certainly in those meetings at C as well, those things could be talked about very clearly as to what, you know, again, there needs to be a return on our 4,900 that we're putting in annually. You know, what is that getting us? I share with the board, you know, some of the literature that C put out as well, saying kind of what is our value? Where do we bring value to you as a school? So hopefully those are all things we can continue to work on.
Well, we need to, if we're going to continue our association with them, we need to join up.
I'll make a motion to continue the C.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
I just got to say I'm a little torn, you know, I I'm going to vote yes for this, but I also would like to speak to the, you know, speak to them and say, hey, you know, that's a lot of money that's going out by these schools and we'd like to see some. And I think if there's been lobbying that's been done and they can show that, I think that's just great, but I just think we need to account for what we spend on things to help bring us revenue and lobbying is certainly a great thing. I've seen, seen that in my own profession, how lobbying has done some wonderful things. And maybe this needs to be brought to their attention a little bit more, but I guess Lori, I would love to speak with you, with him, you know, over those types of things and just help put a, you know, that we're being accountable for that money.
Well, perhaps it would be good for you to attend a meeting as well. What is it? What's once a month, Friday morning?
It varies. It's Thursday or Friday for a couple of hours. And they've been all virtual this year, but.
Okay, they're not back in person?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
And then they're off for the summer and then we get going again. But they certainly welcome guests and I think they'd welcome your questions. I truly do. They.
I only had the privilege of attending one and it seemed well worth it. I can't remember who was the speaker, but it was also very educational and I think that's part of what, one of the reasons we're there as a board. Because we're learning a lot about where we are, other districts that are like us, as well as a lobbying tool, et cetera.
And it's also one of the rare opportunities where I sit in a room with school leaders from across the state. And even if we have an issue that comes up and you can turn to your lunch table and say, hey, have you ever dealt with this? How did you deal with it? I mean, it's just great networking and just a great resource of people at these things outside of their mission, so.
Other comments? Being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion pass. All right, and the item that we added was further discussion regarding the timing of the levy. We voted, we, back in February or March to go ahead. We kind of put it on hold. We voted again the last meeting to go ahead and as Lori explained earlier, it seems as if the timing is just not adequate. There's not enough time to truly do the proper job to have a levy vote on whether it would be November 2nd. Other discussion regarding that?
I don't think this should be rushed. I mean, you have from the professionals, they said, you know, this is probably not good timing. I think we have to respect that. Did they say when would be the next step then? Would it be back in February again?
Well, I think a few things have happened since last week. So, I mean, one of the challenging things for us as a board and as a community is the front page headline of the Chisago Lakes paper is, is we're going out for a levy. And tonight we're talking about what's the timing of that different than November of 21. So when I spoke with Mr. Leatherman, you know, based upon our conversation the other night, obviously I called him first thing Thursday morning and said, you know, here's what our board has decided. They've decided they'd like to proceed with the survey, but they've also, you know, decided they'd like to proceed with a levy. His concern was that, and originally when we had approved this in March for them to begin the work, they were planning on doing the survey in April and early May and having results back to us by the end of May. So we could look at and be informed about levy, you know, certainly, you know, looking at what our community was saying. So they wanted some time to think about it. Actually, when I say they, it was Mr. Leatherman, but also consulting with Todd Rapp and Rapp Strategies, who we had also contracted with. The two of them, you know, spoke over the weekend and I spoke with them on Monday and they just really feel like our timeline is so pinched. We've had to have, you know, some conversations and certainly we've heard from our community. We as a board have struggled with it certainly, you know, what is the, you know, what is the right timing? What's the right thing to do? What's the right thing to pay for? And all those things certainly are a part of the conversation and they're all really important, invalid for sure. And then talking with them as well. And they're saying this is just really not an optimal amount of time to do a survey. Because now if we put out the survey, we'd be talking end of July before we get those survey results back. We have to make a decision by August 20th actually of an actual resolution to go forward with the levy. And then you're talking about absentee voting already beginning in September. And of course, this would be election that we would run. I mean, so we would be doing all the work, we'd be fronting all the costs and everything related to it. So as much as they as consultants, you know, work for fees and make money, they'd said, you know, your best option would be to to go out in November, in December with a survey and do that for 2022. Mr. Leatherman said that the work that he's done for us already in creating the survey, he would just keep that survey and not charge us anything until then. So initially, we were set to pay him $3,500 for the work that he's done to this point to create our survey. He said, just, let's just hang on to the survey and let's talk later and I won't charge anything for now. And so I think that's a very fair, you know, I think assessment from someone who's been in the industry for 27 years, has done a lot of great work professionally and is very well renowned throughout the state in terms of the information that he can gather in a scientific survey that we spoke about. So that's his recommendation also for Mr. Rapp as well. He said, you know, whether you work with me in the future or not work with me in the future, that would be my recommendation. And, you know, we certainly would have to talk about that at that time as well. So if we went out for, with a survey in November, December to gather information from our constituents, from our community, from our, from our families, we would certainly have a good lead on time then because we'd be talking about having our survey results back by January 1st in that neighborhood. And then you have from January until, you know, a general election in November of 2022 to have really time to work through what our survey brought back for information. But also as our, as our community has said, you know, clearly, you know, we'd like to know what would you spend that money on? What would that money be going for? And I think that's certainly a valid point. What is the need and what would that need, what would be fulfilled in those needs? And so, you know, I think, you know, I think I'd sum it up saying, we've heard from our community, you know, our board has struggled over this. We've heard from our levy consultants and maybe it's time to take kind of a deep breath and go, okay, we are going to proceed with a survey, but not now. We are still in need of funding for our schools, no doubt, but now is not the time. The time is just too pinched. And so what would that strategy be if we don't go out for a levy this fall? I think we've identified it in our, in our budget presentation basically, and that is, so what are our options here for the next months? I think the option is to continue to make phone calls and connections to our students and families that are not in our schools and say, okay, we'd love to see you back. I think there's other strategies that we can do to really share what Chisago Lakes has to offer to people. And we know we have great families, we have great students, we have great staff, we have great programs, we have a lot of things to offer. And so increasing enrollment past 3309 would be huge because that's what we're budgeting for. I think the other piece to that is continue to find efficiencies within our spending that we can find while we're in process, which we always want to do is find ways of just being efficient with what we do and saving money. But then I think it's really sharing that need that we have. And the other piece that we built into the SRR3 funding is setting aside $900,000 to deal with any budget issues that might come in the fiscal year 23. So I think the strategy, you know, one is, the recommendation is, let's work with a different timeline. And then the strategy to go with that, I really think is, is how can we increase enrollment? How can we be efficient with our resources? Having that backup plan, a little bit of a, and again, it's one time money, so it's a Band-Aid. It's not something that's going to be able to endure. But then really looking at engaging with our community over our priorities and our needs within our schools and what that levy could represent in that. So, you know, that would be my summary from my conversations with those gentlemen, but also a summary of what you've all heard and shared with Niall and myself, but with each other about what our community is saying and needing and wanting in terms of, yep, you know, that's also another increase potentially to my tax load. I'm willing to, I'm willing to listen, you know, to kind of what the, you know, what that story would be and what the need is. And I think that's where, that's where we see things right now. And of course, that's different than what we talked about last week in terms of timing.
And I don't know, I really like the idea of having some time to let the community just recover a little bit from this pandemic and get in a better position economically as well. And for us to have the time to go back, go put the horse before the cart and say, here's our needs, here's our priorities, this is the amount we need, do some planning. I just feel like if we rush it up to this fall, we don't even have time for good planning about what exactly we need, for how long? Are we building in an inflationary increase? How are we structuring this thing? I don't know. It just feels like if we just, we need to get it done, but let's take this year and do it well and do it right. It just makes more sense to me. That's my.
That's exactly what I would say. I mean, we don't know any of that. And so all of that would have, it's just too, we can't do it in that timeframe. Plus, if we want to share things with the community, if we want to have community input, which we do, how can we do that in no time, really? We can't do it. Which is the reality.
What do you think?
Yeah, I think it's all good points. I don't want to rush this. It's a big, it's a big deal.
So being said, do we just vote to postpone the levy until a future date, which is seems to be 2022?
Did we already decide just to have a levy?
We named November 21, so we would have to.
So you'd need to probably rescind.
We'd have to rescind. Because we named.
Because we did it in last meeting, we can't reconsider, so we'd have to rescind the motion.
Yeah. So we'd have to rescind that motion. And I don't know.
Well, we don't necessarily even have to set a, we could rescind it. And then in future discussions, set the 2022 date.
I would also like us to have a plan to determine those needs, priorities.
Well, that's what we have to do.
Problems with, that we have to work through and community inputs, so those kind of four big things. So what, you know, is that work sessions? Is that whatever, so?
It's a lot.
In the past, we've had work sessions. We've had work sessions where we take input from all areas, administrators, teachers, community, the board. And we put together our priority list. We need to do that work. We need time to do that work. So we need to set some work sessions for that as well and some ways to gather input.
While the evaluation of the survey, see what that would show.
Yeah, we need to look at that.
Determine what will be the way then money.
Our timeline, our scheduling those work sessions.
I would, I would love to have a work session before the end, before we get a survey information because we know we do have some things.
There's no reason that we can't start to work on those.
That's, yeah. I just don't want to wait till end of December. I hope that we could have some sessions together to.
And I think that's a valid point because we get into the school year and other things come and then we just don't take the time to do that work. So I think that's a valid point.
Well, and that could be built into the survey that's sent as well. If we knew some of the priorities that we've identified, maybe that becomes a part of the survey. This is an identified need we've heard, you know, and I don't know what the question would be crafted to go with that, whether it's to clarify that or to affirm that or whether it's to, you know, something like that.
So that would be a good point. We should start to schedule something in that early part of the next school year to sit down as a board with administrative input as well as when we'll start to get some community input as well. And perhaps more of that community input becomes, once we have a survey out, the board will be out too, that's there.
So I will make a motion to rescind last week's motion to go out for a levy in the fall of 21.
I second it.
Is there further discussion? Being none, call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. All right, motion passes. We really don't need to specifically call for a 2022 vote at this point. Let's just leave it at that.
So let's make a plan though, board with you Dean, about the timeline for this thing, so we don't let it get behind us. And we do some planning before the survey goes out and such.
Yeah. I'll put together some initial list ideas. I'll connect with, you know, Mr. Leatherman certainly tomorrow, let him know kind of where that's at, that we're not moving forward with that. But maybe he has some suggestions about how to, how to develop that process in that timeline.
Okay.
And then I can send that to you as a board for information only and then bring that to a board meeting for discussion potentially if there's some adoption of a timeline that you want to make or just some communication certainly to the community about here's what we're looking at for a process.
I think it would perhaps make some sense to put together a committee of people, staff, board, community possibly. I don't want it to get too unwieldy, but it would be good to look at the key stakeholders in this and start working with that group to identify where we, what our needs are, what it would cost to move the school district forward. You know, again, it can't just be a board committee. It should really be a group of people from staff and, you know, while you heard my say, we can think about how that should be composed. People should be a part of this.
I'll start a framework for that and get that to you.
Say something funny? All right, with that, I think we're done with this meeting. Is your motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting's adjourned.